Complete your amen, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Can we have a call to order? Joey?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Brubaker?
Here.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the board. To my far right is Kevin Brubaker. To my right is Vice President Greg Elick. To my left is James Bax. Hello. And to his left is Ian Karstarfen, Dr. Jarmar Superintendent, and Joy Klickinger, our Treasurer. And I'm Mike Gebhardt. This time we have a presentation from Ely, Sharon Duffner.
Hi. So, I was fortunate enough to be asked by my principal to take the mantle upon me of doing Techie Club here at Ely. And for those of you that aren't aware of what Techie Club is, or even at the older grade definition, called major space, it's coming from the idea that we have many children that are talented in many ways, but not necessarily always book smart ways. Maybe they're the kinds of kids that need to get their hands on things and get involved. But also the fact that we are truly moving toward a technological age. And whether you embrace it, or don't embrace it, appreciate it, or don't appreciate it, it's where our students are headed. So, I think Elyria Schools has really run with this. They're trying to get kids ready and prepared for the future marketplace and for future career opportunities. But also, we're really trying to catch kids that maybe don't fit quite in the niche of what you picture at an elementary level, or even middle school, high school. So, I have a couple of helpers here today that are going to show something off for you in a moment. But just to kind of give you an idea of some of the things we do at the elementary level, we do have this wonderful tinker cart that we pull out at Techie Club in the morning. And kids have the opportunity to not only build some things with Legos, where they then use those as story starters to do some creative writing, they can also turn them into movies. There's unlimited possibilities of the things they build with those. They also have another set of Legos called WeBits and LittleBits. And with these, they make motorized connections. And so, again, we're working towards circuitry and different things that they can build. They love to sit down, you can see just as kind of an example, and pass this along to the board in a moment. But as you play with it, it makes a little fan run, there's lights that turn on, they can have a sliding circuit to show different ways that it works. So, just a wonderful hands-on opportunity for them to check out something besides book learning, I guess is the way you want to look at it. We also have Blockcells, which will turn into video game building. And that comes from something called Code.org, which I set a computer in front of the board members in case they wanted to check it out. All of our students started out at Techie Club, learned how to code. If you have heard of Hour of Code, it's a very powerful movement coming across the nation with the idea that there's just so much problem solving and reading and cooperative activity with that. And then they can use the coding on Code.org to move toward programming, whether it be video games or computer programs. And if you look at the top 30 careers for the next 20 years, they are geared around technology. And so, this is just an incredible movement for our kids to get hands-on experience with. So, one of the wonderful things we did was we started at Code.org, and then they took this into something called Spiro. So, once they learn how to code, which is where you put together a chain of commands, and the kids have to be creative with how they put the commands together, not only in some kind of sequential order, but the most effective way to go about it, they then use those commands with another program that works with something that we have called a Spiro. So, my two friends here today, you want to introduce yourselves, boys?
I'm Zach.
I'm Ethan.
Zach, Zach, and Ethan Bellamy, welcome. They're going to show off for you programs they have written together using Spiro. So, one of the first things they do as their program is, they have to just put together a simple chain of commands. They need to pair the device with the nexus, they need to get the Spiro to move, they practice moving it forward, moving it backward. They start building programs, they do circles. They have moved toward getting it to go run mazes. And it's all problem solving. If you want to do something fun, come here on a Thursday morning at 8:00 AM when they're doing the Spiros out. They run them up and down the hallway, they're taking them around chairs and buildings and everything, or, I'm sorry, table legs and everything else, trying to get them going. Just really great problem solving, and the cooperative effort that you see going on is amazing. If you just want to stick on there, why don't you run it through your backs? All right. This is all part of the, you know, one of the awesome things is that you truly learn from failure as well. And so, I think that's a great lesson for them, is that they don't always succeed what they try, but they go back and they try again, and they go back and they try again. And one of the things we see with our students sometimes now is they don't have that endurance that they used to with really sticking with something. I think this is, again, a lesson they take from this, how to go back and try again and work through the problems. So, again, we are here on Thursday mornings at 8:00 AM to about 8:55, the bell rings, we start cleaning up around 8:45. We would love to have guests, we love to have helpers. It's wonderful to have people come in and work with the kids in the morning. And Mr. Pochette and I were just talking about this the other day, is trying to get some people from the community to come in, parents to come in and see what it's really all about. So, I don't know if you have any questions or anything?
Nice to go. Thank you, Mrs. Duffner.
You're welcome. And if you want to play, it's all loaded up for you, you can do some programming.
You shouldn't have given it to this guy, though, because he's an engineer. This time we have visitors' comments, we have a couple people signed up tonight. Matt Mandi Jabonski, want to come on up?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Matt Mandi Jabonski. We might leave you at address 639. That's all right. We had the fantastic opportunity to go to Columbus, Dublin, Ohio, actually, on October 22nd for a conference that was put on by Public Education Partners. We were asked to do a breakout session there on solving the graduation crisis, the danger in lower graduation rates overall and possible solutions for that. The organization that put it on, PEP, if you will, is a nonprofit, nonpartisan group that advocates for public schools. And while we were there, we first got to hear Bill Phyllis speak, a man who is responsible, at least in part, for the Deroff decisions. And so, he gave his opening address, and then that was followed by an awards presentation. And so, the president of PEP, a former teacher by the name of Gene Melvin, first gave two awards to legislators in Ohio, Joe Chivoni and Peggy Lerner, as public education protectors, on the idea that they're advocating for public schools and working legislatively on our behalf. And then, following the legislators being awarded, PEP went on to present Public Ed Protector Awards to school districts as well. And among them was a PEP award for the Elyria City School District. And it says, at least in part, that Public Education Partners officially acknowledges the Elyria City School District as a public education protector for passing a resolution to invoice the state of Ohio for charter school deductions from the school district's state and local school funding. And as we know, Elyria was the first district in Lorain County to do so, and actually the fourth in the state of Ohio. And this is now, you are among 75 districts total that have done so. So, my wife and I are here today on behalf of Gene Melvin, the president of Public Education Partners, to present you guys with this award as a public education protector for your advocacy and defense of public schools.
Great, thank you. Amy Chismar? Please give your name and your address and your topic.
Good evening. My name's Amy Chismar, I live at 405 Park Avenue here in Elyria. And I just have a statement that I'd like to read on behalf of Oakwood School. It reads as such. We, the staff at Oakwood School, believe our Principal Joy Jones and our Secretary Stephanie Carey to be effective in their roles while running the daily operations of our school. Both are ambitious in helping all staff and students achieve success, as well as building a family atmosphere. Joy and Stephanie work feverishly to cultivate a positive rapport among staff, students, and the Oakwood community. They each, in their own way, have had a personal influence on creating a building where each member of our Oakwood family collaborates and contributes to accomplish such goals as improve student achievement, celebrating daily student successes, helping neighborhood families in need, as well as ensuring that we are an efficient and effective at our jobs. Together, our principal and our secretary are essential factors that have made Oakwood a school that resides above the line. Thank you for accepting the fact that Oakwood is a team full of pioneer prides. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the meetings, the meeting of October 19th, 2016, in item F1? So moved. For a second.
A second.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Item G, Treasurer's actions.
Number one, donations. To acknowledge, express appreciation, and accept the following gifts and donations. The Community of Faith, UCC, of Elyria, has presented a donation of children's sweatpants valued at approximately $100 to the students at Prospect Elementary. Number two, purchase orders. To approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G2. Number three, those are the items that I recommend.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Treasurer in item G?
So moved.
Second.
A second. Please call the roll.
Discussion. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye. Moving backwards, Board Member Discussion Items, E. I neglected to do that. Yes, you did. Do you have something, Mr. Bax?
Yeah, yeah. One thing, it shouldn't take more than an hour.
Then you're going to be here by yourself.
Now, I wanted to acknowledge, just last week, I got a note, I got an email from a gentleman by the name of David Jarmuzik. He's a commodity manager at Ridge Tool. And he informed me that in their department and throughout the office area at Ridge Tool, they had been in the process of collecting, you know, if you get, I think they're called Box Tops for Education. And I think they collected so far about 150, and I believe David, yeah, he delivered those out to the admin building, I think, I believe, last week sometime. And they're continuing this and trying to expand this as they go. But I just wanted to certainly commend David and his department and the rest of the people there at Ridge for their support and their continuing efforts.
That's all. Thank you. Anybody else?
Issue 23, right? Hopefully, everybody's gotten out and voted, and gotten everybody they know out to vote. It's so important. And we're hearing good things, really good things in the community. So, it's super exciting, we're very excited, and can't wait for the after-party at Mike Gebhardt's house.
I keep saying that, Ms. Bellamy, but you're out of order. Is this under item J?
This is under whatever item you'd like it to be, so.
And in about 140 hours and a half, the polls close, so. We'll be looking forward to finding the results then. And in 27 hours, or outs, to the Indians won the World Series. Item K, Superintendent Actions.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me, I have a couple things under Treasurer's report.
Oh, I thought we finished.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
If you watch your email, there'll be a list of events for the Capitol Conference coming your way. And more importantly, if your attendance days change at all, make sure I know so we can make those corrections. And by the end of the week, you will have a report on the open purchase orders. That's all. Thank you.
Now Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under Superintendent Actions for the board's consideration this evening. Item one, to approve the overnight field trip for Elyria High School moderate intensive unit students to Peninsula, Ohio on February 28th, 2017, until March 1st, 2017, as detailed in enclosure K1. Item number two, to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trip for the Elyria High School wrestling team to participate in the Beast of the East National Wrestling Tournament at the University of Delaware, Newark, Delaware, from December 16th, 2016 through December 19th, 2016, as detailed in enclosure K2. Item number three, to approve the amended contract for the 2016-2017 school year with PSI Incorporated, PSI and Associates, regarding St. Jude School as detailed in enclosure K3. Item number four, to approve the Cleveland State University's Busby Noditorium facilities' use and service contract for the Elyria High School swim team and diving team, as included in enclosure K4. This is, swim team will use the Cleveland State facilities when Oakland is down during the holidays. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations for the board's consideration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Jarmuzik. I have a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendations in item K.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Superintendent Other?
I do not have other, Mr. President, but I do have items under Personnel Action as recommended by the Superintendent this evening for the board's consideration.
Okay.
Item number one, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff as detailed below. Sandra McKerny will be a long-term substitute kindergarten teacher at Crestwood, as well as several other names on the agenda you will see for substitute teaching positions, as well as home instruction tutors. Item number two, to approve the athletic supplemental contracts for the following certified staff, classified staff, and non-employees as detailed below. And again, they're certified and non-employees, which have to do with wrestling coaches, girls' basketball, our winter coaching positions. Item number three, to approve the following tournament worker for athletic services as detailed below. Item number four, to approve the stipend not to exceed 15 hours each at the tutoring rate for related services to IEPs, conferences, and report cards for coverage of an additional special education services for the following teachers as detailed below. And we have Samantha Bonita and Cynthia Monchak, and they are covering and doing some duties with reference to our physical, or our special needs students for a teacher who is out. So, they're covering some of her duties with the IEPs. Item six, to approve the stipend of $1,000 for the advisor for Ubelong Grant from the 2016-17 school year funded by the Ubelong Grant Lorain County Mental Board of Health as listed below, and that's Heather Worby. Item number six, to approve the appointment of the following classified administrator as detailed below. And as you can see, the board has already approved Anne at a past meeting. HR and the Treasurer had to revise the salary, so it's appropriate. She was not, holidays were not included into the original proposal. Number seven, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff as detailed below. Barb Lingenthaler, who will retire from the head custodian position at Westwood effective April 1st. Number eight, appointment of classified staff, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff as detailed below. And these are individuals who work at our food service and maintenance departments accordingly. Item number nine, proud to present this to you tonight, to approve the new classified substitute rate pay effective November 7th, 2016, as detailed below. It will go for $9 per hour for our food service department and $9.50 per hour for all other departments. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations under Personnel Action for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Jarmuzik. May I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the Superintendent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, question. Dr. Jarmuzik, are we back to all seventh-grade sports now, pretty much?
Yes, we are. I believe we still, with wrestling, I do believe. I'll check on that for you, Greg, I don't want to give you the wrong information. I'm almost positive, though, yes.
So, all the seventh-grade sports that we cut out, you're back? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Is there seventh-grade football?
No, I'm not sure if we had seventh-grade football.
That's the one I need, that's the one, Jim?
Seventh and eighth grade football, still combined.
Yeah, still combined, okay.
That's the one I wasn't sure about.
Okay. And is that more of a numbers thing at this point?
Yes.
It is? Okay. So, as far as what we've done, we're back to where we need to be. Okay, super, thank you.
Any other? Please call the roll.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Dr. Jarmuzik, anything else?
I don't have any other under Superintendent report, but I'd like to have Amy come up, please, and she would like to address the board with reference to the bond issues, some just quick updates. And then also, Mr. Taylor would like to announce our new guest that have become part of the Elyria Schools' family tonight.
Okay, how many hours?
Six days, I didn't get it down to hours. Just an update, we're still working very hard to communicate to voters through many methods, door-to-door, mail, radio, word of mouth, of course, yard signs, all of the traditional means, and some untraditional ones as well. But I'm, I just, I guess, suppose I wanted to just let all of the board know that the early information that we're receiving is very positive.
Good.
Certainly not counting our chickens before they hatch or anything like that, but we believe that we're doing a good job communicating. We feel that people are very positive and are showing a great deal of trust in the school district. But just to reiterate what Mr. Elick said, it's very important for us to continue going all the way through Election Day with our efforts and encouraging everyone to be sure to show up to vote. Early voting is fantastic in the way of, if something happens on Election Day, obviously your vote is already cast, and you don't have to worry about that. You can just sit back at Smithy's with us and enjoy the evening.
I see some of the high school kids went down there and voted for him.
Yes, they did, they did. That was a fun trip. And that's, and one thing that the high school students talked about on that trip was how essential community issues are, even more so than something like the presidential, where community issues hit you directly at home. So, that was a lot of fun, and thanks for watching that.
Yeah, it was good to do it, thanks.
We had a good time with that. But are there any questions about where we're at? So far, the early voting data is pretty significant for Elyria. The report that I had today was over 5,200 ballots have been cast, about 6,800 have been requested. We're running at a great number of positives with the voters that we've been able to identify. So, obviously, in something like this, you've got, you're talking about thousands and thousands of people, so you connect with as many people as you possibly can, and face-to-face is always a winner when it comes to that. But our feedback has been very positive to this point.
So, if our feedback is very positive, then would the last step be getting the vote out?
Yes.
That's going to be the essential. Do we have enough volunteers for that?
We need volunteers for that, yes. We always need volunteers on Election Day, and it's actually, it's very easy work, it's a lot of fun, actually. You're just basically wearing stickers, holding a sign, and smiling at people. You're not being annoying in any way, just friendly.
So, you just hold a sign and smile?
You just hold a sign and smile.
I'm hosting the party.
Greg, I have a sandwich board for you.
Yeah, oh, great. But there are still a number of opportunities to get involved if anybody is looking to do so. Election Day is an important day.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thanks.
Amy, one question. What would, what do we expect to be total votes cast in the city, or in our district, for our district?
I have heard about 15,000. But...
So, the absence is almost a third?
But I don't, yeah. But, and we're actually very, from the data that I've received from our consultant, in terms of where we are with early voting compared to across the state, we're right on par with the state in terms of how many people have voted already. But it is actually kind of on the high side for Elyria with our history. So, but they're, the strategists are very quick to tell you they're not sure what to expect out of this election because of the tumultuous nature of it. So, they initially were very encouraging that turnout was going to be very high, then they said that they felt that it may not be what they expected it to be. Now, I think they're feeling more comfortable with the numbers again, but I think it's gone up and down.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Mr. Taylor, do you have something? Boardhouse?
We're fortunate to have two of our new boards here seen to approve, and if they stand out, so...
You want to use the microphone? Jim can't hear too well. That's right.
Is that on?
How's that? Sandra Kearney, here on the left, obviously, will be joining us at Crestwood, helping out with our kindergarten staff. We've had an influx of new kindergarteners at Crestwood, which is a nice problem to have.
That's a nice one.
And so, we will have four kindergarten teachers. Sandra will be part of that. Brandon Bowles, Brandon is up at Central Kitchen at Elyria High, where he's actually been since July or August, but will be up there now on a more permanent basis as a, helping us up there as well. So, join me and welcome, welcome.
Good job. Board adjournment reports?
Go Tribe, that's all I got to say.
I have a couple things. Mr. Buzinski, nice article in the paper today, we'll be looking forward to your sign.
I hope I don't disappoint you.
Are you putting any yellow posts up around this?
There'll be a beacon anytime anybody gets close to it, and then the airbags go up around.
Well, the school won't be there long, so.
I didn't remember that in planning commission.
Dr. DB, thank you for keeping the temperature down tonight.
You're welcome. Do you want it any colder coming another month?
Mandy Jabonski, thank you for your comments, and Amy Chismar, thank you. Anything else? May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Elick?
Chili cook-off.
Oh, Saturday, the chili cook-off, that's right, at Westwood. 5 to 8 o'clock, come one, come all, there's 20. But last I spoke to Teresa, I believe there's 22 participants, does that sound right, Anne? 22 participants. I will be one of the participants, you're not doing it, are you, Anne?
Yes.
You are.
It's Saturday night at Westwood. Last year was a huge, huge crowd and a huge undertaking, and then also Saturday morning is the Gate Fair at Elyria High School.
Scavenger hunt.
Scavenger hunt, scavenger hunt. 9 o'clock.
And what's the cost of the chili cook-off?
I believe it's a doc, go ahead, Jim.
$5.
I can't, I'm seeing this.
$5.
$5.
For five samples, five tastings.
And I went last year, and it was amazing, the people there. I was really impressed.
Anything else? Oh. We have to call the roll.
Mr. Elick?
Aye, go Tribe.
Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye, 27 outs.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming today.
Meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned.